Okay, next is approval of the board minutes for the regular scheduled board meeting on December the thirteenth, twenty twenty one. Do I hear a motion to accept those meetings?
Make motion to accept.
Okay. John, second. All in favor? That's everyone. Okay, next is superintendent's report.
All right, I will jump right there to recognition of stakeholders and I will facilitate that through our Character Strong presentation. We revamped our character program and it's back in the fall and we're following the Medal of Honor format. And these students, each month, we recognize students from each of the different schools where teachers can nominate students, students can nominate teachers. And this is from the month of December. Our board meeting was moved up in December. We met at the high school, so that was before all of the character recipients were nominated. And so we'll do January and February at the next meeting. So at Davis Elementary, we had Cody Thompson. Cody is a kindergartner who displays generosity every day. He wants to make sure everyone is taken care of and included at all times. It is a pleasure to have him in the classroom. Kiara Hale. Kiara is a first grade student and she is the perfect example of generosity. She shows nothing but kindness to everyone around her while at school. And then Katie Brown is a fifth grade teacher at Davis Elementary. Katie continually serves others. Each year, she leads our fifth graders with a service project for the elderly at San Mountain Nursing Home. She also helps send shoeboxes to impoverished children at Christmas. Ms. Brown is also the first one to ask, how can we help others on our step who are struggling? So congratulations to those students and Katie Brown. At Dave Elementary, Dave Elementary, we have Deacon Cameron. Deacon is being recognized by Ms. Misty Webster, second grade teacher, for being generous. Deacon is always the first student to volunteer to help his classmates and teachers. He shares with everyone and strives daily to make positive contributions in the classroom. And Ms. Cece Brandon, she's a secretary and bookkeeper at Dave Elementary and is being recognized for her generosity. Ms. Brandon goes above and beyond with giving her time and talents to help all staff and students to succeed in their endeavors. From Dave Middle School, we have two students that were recognized for their generosity. We have Tay Michaels on the left and Elida Wiley on the right. And then the staff member at Dave Middle School is congratulations to Ms. Kristen McBurnitt, who was the Medal of Honor recipient for December. At Dave High School, Jersey Crabtree. Jersey is always being generous. She offers to help her classmates with their work. She's also always thanking the lunch ladies and telling them to have a good day. Jersey not only helps her classmates out on a daily basis, but she also goes above and beyond making sure they are okay. She's very generous and has a sweet soul. And Jersey was one of our scholarship recipients last year, the REACH Scholarship. Jacob Parker from Mr. Howard. Jacob volunteers to help after school and during the summers. He's logged over three hundred hours working around the Dave County school system during his three and a half years at Dave County High School. And then Ms. Erica Sims in the cafeteria. Michaela Chance had this to say about Ms. Sims. She never fails to have a smile on her face when I go through the lunch line. She is constantly complimenting students and always makes my day better. And that's spot on with Ms. Sims. She's always got that same smile. So that's it for our character. As far as recognition of our stakeholders, we are blessed with all the stakeholders support in Dave County, but we also want to send a special thanks to the following stakeholders for donating to our CTAE programs. Most recently, Bull Moose Two, Teleflex, Elder's Hardware, and Tractor Supply. And we will continue to showcase our stakeholders anytime they partner in anything that we do in Dave County schools. Now, this month, under our department reports, we have Director Chris Green and Karen Bradford, who will give you an update on E-Rate and data breach training.
I'm just going to touch a little bit on where it's E-Rate time, we're about to do our new projects. I'm just looking to find as many things possible that we can take eighty percent of that burden off of us, just for us to use E-Rate funding for it. So at this point in time, eligible items that I'm looking to do, we're just in the beginning stages of this, I'm working with our E-Rate consultant along with Tanner and we're able to get, just to make sure they're eligible and apply properly so we can, you know, but our part will be twenty percent instead of a hundred percent on these if we get approved. Looking to do our network managed services, that's something we pay every year coming out of the general fund that is in fifty something thousand dollar range. So that is now eligible. So looking to get that to a point so that'll go out for bid, but what I think we'll do for that, for the four seventy bid nationally, so what I think we want to do with that is to make sure that we have emergency help as fast as possible. So there will be a time restraint placed on eligible bidders. So we don't want a company out of like Sacramento sending somebody from Geek Squad to look at our service. We want somebody who's like part of their company doing it. So there's more to that and I'll talk more about the E-Rate stuff later, but just talking about the items. So that's a big one we'd like to add to the E-Rate funded thing. Others, we're going to add about seven more network switches. So we have, we've got two that need to be added for just the amount of connections we have. And we have five more that we'd like to have in each building. There's a need for them, but it's kind of for growth so that if we have one that happens to die or break down, there would be one in each building that could quickly be shifted into place. Because as y'all know, with supply chain stuff right now, we're sometimes months out and we can't have a wing of a building out for a month. So basically, this would cover that. So we would hope to basically, if this all goes through, we would have like basically an adequate spare switch for that, an adequate spare switch in every building, or quick hot swap type removal. It would be in use already, but it could cover a much larger area than it's going to be in. So just basically room for growth, also E-Rate eligible. This round server room, we have old telecom cabinets from like the early nineties. They don't fit the servers properly. Some of them basically are, have almost too much weight on them from the way they have to be mounted in the cabinets. Looking to clean up that a little bit better, get our fiber a little more safe and secure, and to get real new server cabinets where they're, basically we get online alerts about temperature, power, things like that. And right now, it's just kind of a, we monitor that on our own. So just things like that. And the last, yes, sorry.
One question about, going back to the network managed services. The current vendor for its network managed service is MCA?
MCA, Mike Collins Associates out of Chattanooga.
They're out of Chattanooga.
Yep. And that, so basically the, you would basically have more or less, there won't be much further away than Chattanooga because we have a disaster, we need somebody here within like, within, really truthfully, within a half an hour. We want somebody on the ground near that point in time. So there's several companies that can do it in the Chattanooga area and it's probably going to be about that far away in any direction we can go. But yeah, they're, I mean, they've done, they've done a good job and they'll be more than eligible to bid on it and hopefully they'll give us a better rate. So hoping for that. And our last one is our firewall, there's an annual licensing fee. After the first three years, it was included and now there's like an annual fee. This is also something that's not like a sploshed eligible item. It is however, now an E-Rate eligible item. So we're trying to just reduce those costs for the campus, which right now is the main goal. It won't matter who we buy it through, as far as that goes, it's just we can get, E-Rate paid for eighty percent of it if it gets approved. A lot more limited than last year's E-Rate. It was pretty ambitious last year with all the switches, phone system, new wireless system throughout, but all of those are again in functional and basically we paid our part, which was our twenty percent on those as opposed to the full hundred percent which they would be in. For example, this year, the wireless top system we put in isn't eligible, so we hit it at the right time. Same thing with the phone system. They, it'll cover like the servers, but won't cover the hardware. So it's kind of like we're just, you gotta hit it when it's eligible and it may not be eligible the next year, but we'll get as much help as we can as we get it. Those are our needs, there aren't a won't, it's all needs that we're in. In talking about like emergency response, that kind of brings us to Tanner. We had a, our local RISA did a training on cybersecurity incidents. Because I mean, you don't think about it until it happens. And then you go, what do we do? I mean, it's like, you have a data breach whether it be student data, teacher data, and all of a sudden you have to have like a quick adequate response, but you gotta do it the legal way, the right way, and contact the right people. RISA provided a training where Tanner, Bradford went and did the training with them where they became part of a team and they basically had simulated data breach and then they had to create a response plan. Also, like, Mr. Engel, we have to have one of these response plans?
Yes. GSBA currently is our, they carry our cyber security, our cyber security insurance. And at our last board controlling meeting, moving forward, districts are going to be required to, you know, we can pay for the insurance, but before they insure us, they want to see what our plan is for data breach. And I think, I think that's only going to get, going to become a common thing that we have to submit before anybody's going to insure us. So our RISA hosted some, our technology directors around Northwest Georgia. And of course Tanner represented Dave County Schools and they've worked on putting a plan together that hopefully we can send to GSBA and say, all right, if our data's breached, here's our steps. So Tanner worked on that plan, he's going to share that information with you. And we've, Ms. Paula has already sent that plan to GSBA to see if that will, to see if that will meet the requirements so that we can make modifications before we roll it, before our insurance rolls over the next year.
And Tanner, he constructed our plan to this point and basically it is just that's being reviewed at this point, but you know, by what he was trained on, it was what they were looking for. So I'm going to turn it over to Tanner to talk to you just a little bit about the cybersecurity training and our plan that now we do have a plan and that's the next one.
So while I was there, they did a little PowerPoint on some of the information and in 2020, education was number five in ransomware attacks. And in 2021, it jumped up to number two. So they just want to get more people trained in what to do if you are hit with ransomware. And they had an exercise to go through and they simulated a data breach within the school and we had to figure out what kind it was and what the steps we needed to do to get the data back or to rebuild the machines that were attached. And as it went through, more information was revealed in each step. So we had to think about it and think about what people to involve, the finance, H R, superintendent, and then relay communications between all the staff and if we needed to alert our parents or people like that. And then have to come up with a response plan for each individual thing that we learned. And then this is our data plan. So on the first step, we would just determine what computers have been affected and disconnect them from the network so it can't be spread to other computers or servers. And three, if it starts affecting other computers across the network, then email, then an email needs to be sent out stating that we're going to take the network down and no phones or communication will work so that it stops the spread. And four, determine what files and if any employee data was encrypted. Since student data is not on our servers, then we don't really have to worry about that as much, but teacher data is stored on what server?
It's on the infinite campus servers which are with them. It's basically, they're responsible for that. We're basically, we attach, we basically just attach them through the web so the data's somewhere there. As far as the student information system, that is all.
So if there's a data, if there's a data breach with infinite campus?
Yes.
That's on, that's on the vendor?
Yes. And that will be a large scale response at that point, just like how so many people have to have.
And if there is a data breach, then we would have to talk with the superintendent and let them know that we will have to call insurance and GMA at the same time to discuss what our plan would be. So insurance can send out extra help if we were to need it with getting our computers and servers back online, but also that's what our network managed services team could help with.
Especially if servers were affected, all of our servers are, we've got months and months of full backups. So if something were to happen and we, you know, in the past, we did have a ransomware attack and basically we had to basically rely on experts to come up with the best way to address it. Now we've, the experts have guided us through the process of coming up with an actual plan. Would have loved to have had this step by step if that, to go back in time. We relied heavily on our network managed services group that we're now involved with that helped us get back everything we needed to get back. It relied, nothing was taken, it was just an encryption thing, but basically they encrypted all our files and tried to hold them ransom and we just, we were able to go back in time. And so we lost a few days of the most current versions, but we were able to recover everything and shut the threat out with a better firewall.
So does this benefit of having a network managed service provider?
Yes.
As opposed to managing that workflow?
Right. Because we store, we basically, all of our servers are stored basically on a virtual server, Dell Vertex. They're stored in a data backup hardware appliance, also onsite, in and out in the cloud with our network managed services crew. So even the event of a disaster, like an environmental disaster, we still have full everything of every server we have. We can even bring them up, like say you were offsite, we can spin those servers up from their cloud. If ours were destroyed, we can still run our equipment that way. Now, we need stuff to connect to it with, depending on what got destroyed here, but it's a, it's a good backup system. But again, this, this is a great move by the state to have us have this plan in place because a step by step would have been amazing at the time. Because you're just, at that time, you're just, what do we do next? You know, just trying to call them and work your way through it, learn the right people. But now there is a step by step, so.
You've heard of major cyber attacks of some close proximity to us?
Yes.
That actually had to pay a ransom?
Yes.
I hope, I hope we're never.
Right. We were there and as Tanner can tell you, there's certain organizations we can and cannot.
There's three to five, I don't remember the exact number, that you cannot pay. Homeland Security is one of them, we can pay them.
Right. And that's where with ours, you know, we were sitting in a situation with encrypting files where we were being asked at that point in time and having adequate backups, you know, protecting us from that, we were able to go back in time, but, and now we would be very comfortable in that particular type of an attack. But if they start encrypting files or using your files to get you to shut things down and turn things off, that's between having the firewall in place and having really good backups and relocations, most types of attacks, we're in pretty good shape right off the bat. But with the help of others, we can be in even better shape. And I think this is an important step in going in that direction.
Is there anything that individual users can do or not do that helps prevent that? And are there protocols and practices in place and training for individual users of the system?
We do, we do with Life Day. It's compliance director, is it the name or thing we do at the beginning of the year? There's a thing about, basically we do these modules at the beginning of the year that basically go through and tell you what you should and shouldn't do as far as you should never open something from some point you don't know. The next step, and this is something we're looking at with our network managed services group, is to actually send out simulated ones to people and basically just to, not to do a gotcha kind of thing, but just to go, oh, we know, exactly. So that's kind of a, yes. So exactly that, it's exactly that. It keeps people a little more suspicious of things that they're getting because they feel like, uh-oh, this might not be real. And it's always good to take that too from someone, something you're not expecting that's all, or something that's from someone you don't know. Our email system kind of warns you a little bit about it, but by the same token, that's also kind of a next step we're looking to take. So yes, that would be something that we hope to improve on, so.
Our staff is very, they're pretty good about if they're seeing something suspicious, they'll.
Yes.
They can email or the tech house.
Yes.
Say, hey, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to do this.
Right.
Or they'll send it through a ticket.
Yes. We get, we get several like that and we look, we enjoy getting those because that leaves people on the lookout for themselves and others, so.
And then we're coordinating with network managed services on getting the backup storage on the machines that were infected and servers. And then after the backup circuit, we didn't, the ransomwares are erased and we can get the devices back into classrooms and get the network back up and running and then send out an email letting everyone know that the network's back on. And that's it.
Good job.
Thank you.
Next on the list is Dave County Cover Library. Hey, I'm Amy Howard. I'm the new manager of the library. I started back in December, so I've been there approximately, coming up on six weeks now. And the one thing I wanted to share with y'all especially is the collaboration that we're working on and the partnership that we want to develop with the school system. So I've been in contact with the media specialist at the elementary, at Dave Elementary and at Dave Middle School, and we're setting up meetings with them to coordinate the books that they would like to see us helping them with in the library. On that note, what we've talked about and what we figured out is that we basically, there's basically two gaps that we've noticed that we can provide as a public library that's slightly different than what the school libraries can provide. And those two gaps are this incredible app called Libby. If y'all haven't tried Libby yet, it's something that you can download on your phone and it has access to thousands of ebooks, audiobooks, and magazines. And what I've heard from parents as well as teachers, I actually met with one of the teachers at the high school and she was like, have you heard about this Libby app? And I'm like, it's my favorite thing ever. A lot of their students want audiobooks to be able to listen to while they're reading along. Auditory comprehension is sort of a different entity than visual comprehension. And all these audiobooks are free. They're free with a library card. So we're really trying to make sure that, I'm working with her to try to get her students this semester all signed up for a library card. And Spencer, who's our new youth education coordinator, and I'll introduce him in a second, where we can go into the school and help the students get on the Libby app and find some of those magazine publications, ebooks, or really it's the audiobook that's a fantastic opportunity. We're also working in a couple other, a couple other things, making sure that when there's books that are assigned in the classrooms, that we're working with the media specialist and the English teachers to make sure we have copies, both the digital copies on that Libby. And we purchase books on Libby the same way we purchase books, you know, print books. And there's something where you can do multiple access to one book. It's a different type of purchase than just purchasing a single access at a time to an audiobook and making sure that we've set aside money to purchase books in our Libby system that will be aligned with what the teachers are asking their students to read that year so that there'll be simultaneous access. So several students that want that option of having an audiobook along with the print book, they would be able to have that. So that's one of the big collaborations. We've got a couple other things in the works too that I'm really excited about, the library just working in collaboration with the schools. That being said, the other gap that we noticed that we wanted to talk about, that I'm going to let Spencer, he's brand new, he started last week with Dave County Library in particular as our youth education coordinator, and he's also working within the Cherokee regional system as our pop-up coordinator. Some of y'all might have seen him on Saturday at the rec basketball games out at the high school. So the pop-up coordinator, he goes out in the community and takes our library and creates a little library and puts it wherever you want it to be, to register people for library cards, check out books, figure out what's going on at the library. But I'm going to let him talk about the digital resources that are also free and an incredible resource for all of our students in Dave County. Spencer.
Thank you. To hang on that last note, if you know anywhere that you would like the pop-up library to go, we can do anything that the library can do in a smaller format, pretty much anywhere we've got, Chromebooks, Hotspots, you can get a printer if you want it. Pretty much anything you want us to do, we can do. Not putting on my youth education coordinator hat, is these digital resources are really special. I think with kind of the overflow of online educational resources that we have, it's hard to find quality resources and it's also easy to take these for granted. This, especially Learning Express Library, which we're going to talk about in a second, is something that not every system in Georgia has. Most things are shared between public libraries in Georgia, if you're familiar with Pines, our collections are all shared. Online resources like Learning Express Library, it's pretty unique to the Cherokee system and it's something we've invested in because we think it can help our students and adults to progress in whatever areas that they want to improve in. So I want to talk about E-Rate Kids. It's a, it's kind of like Libby, but it's just for children. So it's, it's a huge collection of thousands of picture books that have audio with them. And so we know that working parents and parents that don't have a lot of time on their hands have a hard time finding the time to read to their kids. That could be one of the things that falls through the cracks. That's also one of the strongest and most historically predictable determinants of how, of a child's success in school is how much they can get read to, how many words they can hear before third grade, right? So with E-Rate Kids, it's a way for parents to access audiobooks and have them read out loud to children. And again, this is online, you can go on whenever you want, get high quality literature for children and, and get read to them as well. And it's accessible on tablets, computers, anything, all free with a library card. The other thing is Learning Express Library, it's a catalog through Galileo, which is our statewide database and gives access to resources starting in the fourth grade, aligned with state standards to assist students online to have any extra help, practice test, remedial material. Everything fourth grade through high school has core content on it. And it's also got GED classes. It can help you prepare for the ACT, SAT, PSAT. It can help with nursing exams, nutrition exams, plumber exams, law enforcement, nursing teaching exams. All that preparation is on there, all for free, no extra charge for these services. And I don't know much more to say about it. It kind of, it kind of sells itself. You can get resume help on it, it helps you write your college admission essays, it can prepare you for any kind of career, any stage in life too. It's for, again, starting in the fourth grade through adults. It's got life skills, anything you could look for online. And the best thing about it is you know this is quality. If you're getting on this, you know it's good information because when you're switching on the internet, you never know what you're going to get. If you're going through Learning Express, you know it's going to be good, reliable information.
And I just wanted to add to that too, with your library card, it's all free, when you sign into Learning Express Library, it tracks your progress. So if you're going through the, you want to take the SAT prep exam, it takes you through all the, all the subjects that you're working through for the SAT, tracks your progress until you're ready to take those practice exams. So, or if you're doing extra tutoring help for fourth grade math, it'll track your progress, where you're at in that. So it's just one more of those great, you know, free resources that the library, that the library provides.
Yeah. And just wanted to reemphasize that this is something that we are, this is an optional purchase, right, as a public library in Georgia, we're not required to have this, but this is something that we think is really important and we think it can impact our students. it can impact our students and families.
What are your hours?
Our hours are Tuesday through Saturday. Tuesdays and Thursdays, we're open late until seven, and that's mostly to accommodate our programming, which we are gearing up our programming now. We've got our first, basically, children's programming is for grade school. Teen programming is for 15 and above. And then we have adult programming. I'm pretty sure I didn't see any of y'all at adult juggling, but it's happening. So come on out and learn to juggle. It increases your grade and white grade matter to learn to juggle, just in case you're wondering. But we are initiating programming on all levels. Spencer, our first children's programming is going to be building paper airplanes. We're really excited. So constructing paper airplanes and practice drawing up and stuff like that.
And how optimal is Spencer being in Dade County?
Well, for, as far as the youth education coordinator position, he's 20 hours in Dade County. He will most, he will, most often, he will be at the library all day Tuesday, all day Thursday. We have our ready-to-read preschool story time every Thursday at 10:30. Spencer will be doing that every Thursday. So basically, Tuesdays and Thursdays, our youth education coordinator will be there the entire day to accommodate any programming. And then he's going to float. Those extra hours will be floating hours. When we wanted to come to the Board of Education meeting, when he's going to come to the schools with me and meet with the media specialists and the teachers to ascertain what we can do to provide more resources for them. So he's going to float those extra hours here and there. The pop-up coordinator position, actually, it's grant-funded, and it's a terminal position that ends in October.
In September.
End of September. And at that time, Spencer will be coming on for the full youth education coordinator hours, which are going to be between 30 and 35 hours per week. And he will be doing even more. That's hard to, he's already in the first week he's been here. I'm just blown away by this young man. He's amazing. He's also taking over our social media, which is hugely important in Dade County. From what I learned, is that we have like 35% of Dade County's population is on Facebook. That's almost unheard of. That's a lot of people finding their information on Facebook, where to go, what time things are open, what programming program available. So one of the areas I'm not fabulous at, and I'm so happy that Spencer's, his, the things he's good at are complementing the things I'm good at. And he's really upping our game in the social media and making sure everybody stays informed of what we have going on.
And we'll get a TikTok page sometime too.
We heard that's a way to get to the teens.
You mentioned in the beginning about communicating with the media specialists at Dade Elementary and Dade Middle, and then reference talking with the high school. Have you reached out with Davis?
I have reached out with Davis, in particular with their media specialist, but I'm working on it. It's one of the relationships that I'm trying to build, and the principle of Dade Elementary is actually helping us with one of our community outreach programs that's coming up in February. She's with the Alliance for Dade, and what we ask for, so this next, this community outreach program that we're kind of, that's coming up is really important. It's grant-funded. We got a grant to provide this service. It's family literacy. And so what we're doing is we're targeting specific families that don't have a relationship with the library, that are underserved in our community. And what this particular primetime program does is we invite them for six weeks to come into the library. We provide a meal. We provide a storyteller and a scholar. And what we're trying to do is we're trying to teach families to read to their kids, because it's such an important aspect of developing lifelong literacy and elevating our community. So we, each child goes home every week with two books for their home library. The storyteller reads the book, the scholar asks Socratic-style questions, which are basically to let parents know, there's not a right or wrong answer. You're asking your kids, you're opening their world by inviting them to share their thoughts and their feelings about books. And when we open the program with a meal, it just helps solidify the relationships that we're trying to build in the community. And so yeah, Alliance for Dade is providing our first meal for our families. And we have, I think the Methodist Church is providing two meals, Wildwood is providing a meal, and then we're working with two of our local restaurants to bring sort of special meals in as well for our families. And that starts in February. It's not open to the public any minute to come, because we're really targeting families that don't have a relationship. We really want to find a way to reach that part of our community. So the advertising will be very restrained in the sense that if you know anybody that you think needs to be part of this, call me at the library. We will sign them up. We have limited space. We can register 13 families. So if you know somebody, or you want to write, you know, reach out to me at the library, we do have a community organizer. She works at Dade Elementary, and she is seeking and finding those families that we're hoping to recruit to be a part of this program.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I do have a question about the number of people who are registered for library cards, either, you know, do you have any data around that for either all of Dade County, but in particular with the schools, like how many kids actually have library cards?
I don't have data on that. I wish I did. I'll have that for the next meeting, for sure. There is a program, and I wasn't going to bring, I wasn't sure how long y'all wanted me to be up here talking to you. There is a program that several of the school systems in Walker County, and Chickamauga School System in Walker County have started a pilot program. It's called the Play Card. And we're hoping that Dade County will jump on board with that as well. And I would like to meet with y'all, you know, maybe later to explain this. I know that Chickamauga and Walker County, they're rolling out the program starting March 1st. What the Play Card program does is it automatically registers every school child with a library card. And the information shared, which is really interesting, coming after y'all, talking about cybersecurity, everything is very limited what information is actually shared, but it gets them enrolled, and you have to opt out of a library card. So every child will get a library card when they enroll in school, and that would make getting them on this Libby app so much easier, because that's the barrier that we're finding. And I have found that anytime somebody comes across one barrier, they just stop and walk away, like, oh, no, I'll get to that later. So we want to remove the barrier of parents and kids having to do one more thing. And so I'm going to be reaching out to you all to discuss this Play Card opportunity, and maybe hoping that we can get on board with that, where the kids will automatically be registered. And I know there's, before coming here, I was teaching middle school in Hamilton County, and they were starting a similar program there where all the schools, all schoolchildren in elementary school were given a library card. And it's a limited use. So instead of 50 books that you're allowed to check out, with the Play Card, you're allowed five books to check out, but you still get it for the two weeks. So it's a little bit, it's a little bit more restrained than a regular card. But you can always turn that Play Card, when you come into the library, into a regular-use library card as well.
And there's no fines on the Play Card here?
Oh, yeah. That's right. That's a big selling feature on the Play Card. There's no fine. There's no really fines on it.
And the Libby app and the E-reader are both downloadable on Chromebooks, on Bay County Chromebooks?
Well...
That would be accessible through a browser.
Yeah, you would have to open a browser to do that. So we wouldn't download the app on there. But students could also download the app if they have a home computer, or if they have a smartphone. That would probably be more likely with our high school students. I know I listen to my books on tape in my car on Libby on my phone. So I just download it on my phone, or if you have an iPad, you can download it. But yeah, you can access it through, you just open up a browser and open the Libby app. And once you have your library number, that's really what we need. We need a library number. You put in your library number when you're registering for that Libby app, and then you have access, immediate access to all of those things.
I think you might be seeing kind of a gap here, like students that don't have library cards right now before Play Cards roll out, right? So with Libby, with accessing our online resources, a parent can sign up their student online anytime for a digital-only card. So they can access Libby and E-Reader without going through the grand.
Exactly. And that's, I know Molly Rogers, she's the ninth-grade English teacher at the high school. That's who, she reached out to me wanting to know about the Libby card. And what we're trying to do is get all of the students to go home and get their parents. On our website, there's a digital library card. It's also a restricted-use card. You can't come in and check out books, but you have access to all of our digital resources. So she's trying to, I told her my assignment for grade, have the kids go home, sign up for a library card, and bring that library number back. And then Spencer and I will come in and get all the kids on Libby and see, and get them to check out a book, so we can talk them through all those steps. So it's really, like, if you're under 18, a parent has to go through that digital process with you. But it's a big green button. It says, register for your digital card on our website, the CHR website. And then click on that, and it just talks you through registering, and you get a library card in three minutes. So that was, that's the route that I was going down with Molly to try to get hers, because she wants all her students on this semester. So we're working on that in the interim between trying to register the county, or get involved, the county involved with the Play Card. And, oh, okay, great. And I'll make sure I have some of those steps next time. Thank you so much for allowing us to come and present to y'all. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda starts the conservative district distribution.
Board norms and protocols. The GSBA has included a new requirement for exemplary board standards. According to GSBA, the board norms, the governance team has established formally, adopted, and advised by Griffin Governance Team board norms and protocols. The Dade County Governance Team has already established its board norms and protocol. So we'd like to start each year with the board approving the norms and protocols at the January meeting, and then in May or June, when we do our self-assessment, any revisions that need to take place mid-year, we can do that and make any changes. And if there are any changes, we can bring them back to the board for approval. With that being said, I recommend the board approve the board norms and protocols for the FY '22 calendar year. We went through the board norms and protocols at the work session back in October at the, at Ms. Griffin's office, line by line. So I recommend that the board approve the board norms and protocols as presented.
Any questions? Next is our monthly financial statistics.
Okay. You have in front of you tonight the monthly financial for year for December 31st, 2021. And it's hard to believe that we are at 50% of the fiscal year being complete. And the first section that you will be looking at tonight is our revenue. Our total revenue collections year-to-date is $11,691,520.65. And the revenues coming in good from July to present, we're at 59.19% on our collections. The next section is our general funding expenditures. And if you'll look over in the middle, where I have actual, our total expenditures year-to-date is $9,557,527.53. And we're over just a little bit on that. But like I tell you, at the beginning of every year, we have a lot of invoices that come in. July, we pay, and we're at 50.94% of our expenditures. And over on the right, where I have the encumbrance, the state has asked us to start presenting this every month to the school board, and we have open POs totaling $11,124.53. On the last section of this page, our ending balance for July 1st, 2021 was $4,405,463.94. Total revenue was $11,691,520.65. Our total expenditures year-to-date was $9,557,527.53, leaving our ending balance for December 31st, 2021 On the next page is our SWOSS financial. And once again, if you look at the top, we're at 50% of the fiscal year being complete. Our Avalorian collections for July was $620,499.99. For December 21st, they were $706,507.40. We were down by $86,741.41. The middle section is our SWOSS five account. Our ending balance for November 2021 was $2,797,153.98. The interest for December was $348.36. Sales tax distribution was $266,286.16. Outstanding checks totaling for December was $9,097.12. Issued checks that cleared the bank for December was $81,273.08, leaving our ending balance in the SWOSS five account at $2,972,535.30. And next month will be the last month that we collect revenue on SWOSS five account. We've already went and opened up a new account for the SWOSS six account. And as the gentleman were telling you guys that was here before the meeting, we will continue spending all of this money in this account, and when we zero it out, we will move over to the SWOSS six account. And everything is kept in separate funds in a different bank account. The last section of this, in fiscal year 20, our SWOSS revenue was at $219,795.51. SWOSS revenue for fiscal year 21 in December was at $216,666.67. It was down by $3,128.84. December 22nd, SWOSS came in at $266,286.16. We were up from fiscal year 21 by $49,613.49. That's what I want to hear. That is good. And on the next page, Mr. Engel has asked me to do this each month, to keep y'all in the loop, how the construction and progress is going. And this is renovation at the Dade County Middle School, and the contractor is PNC Construction. And if you'll see at the top, our contract was $677,000. We paid three payments. The one in December was $61,694.60. And the remaining balance on this project is $432,632.01. And the last thing we'll be looking at tonight is, we have just kindly summarized all of our SWOSS expenditures. And on over on your computer, you can see every expenditure broken down by facility. For the month of December, we have it broken down by facility. I'm not going to read that, but if you look down at the bottom, for December, we expended $81,273.08. And like I said, if you want to know what these expenditures are, I have a spreadsheet in there that you can go back and pile this back in. And the last column is our year-to-date total on all expenditures broken down by facility. And you also have on there a facility, for each of their schools, we have a financial also. And this is a new page that's green. The State Department has asked us to go in every month. All of our grants are listed on the left. We're going to have to tell you what the grant was approved for, what it was expended, the revenue, open payables, and ending balance. And this didn't complete. I want to thank Cynthia for helping me do this. She's worked a lot of hours on this. But we're still tweaking it. But if you ever want to know about what the name of our grants are and how much the grant was approved for, you will be getting this every month. Are there any questions?
Next is Bay First Family Connection, or no, excuse me, Civic Day.
Yes. I recommend that the board approve the attached agreement with Civic Day Development Company. Company.
All right, no questions on that one. We'll move down to Dade First Family Connection Fiscal Agent.
This is an annual agreement with Dade First Family Connection. I recommend the board approve serving as the fiscal agent for Dade First Family Connection for the FY '23 school year.
Any questions on that one? Okay, next is more for Dade Elementary School building 2022.
I recommend the board approve a new boiler for Dade Elementary School from Chattanooga Plumbing, and the amount that you see listed there.
Is that in the old room, where you're speaking, or is it in jail?
No, it's in the, it's in the new section, just down where you hit the media center, take a left, it's just right next to the cafeteria and kitchen area. But all three boilers are located there that serve the entire school. So they're all in that mechanical room.
Thank you.
Any more questions on that one?
There's two different, there's the first section that has Fender and Estimative.
At the top, the total.
At the top, but then on down, it's kind of the same thing, but the amounts are different?
They quoted the wrong, John had to rescind the, had to send in the tag of the current boiler, so he had the wrong specifications.
Gotcha, thank you.
So it still came in as the lowest, lowest bid, or lowest quote.
Okay, any other questions? All right, we'll move on to diesel fuel.
All right, I recommend the board approve the lowest quote for diesel fuel from Jet Energy in the amount of 3.075 per gallon.
Change of names? Are they a different company, or are they?
It's Jet Oil.
So which one are you recommending?
Jet.
Jet Oil. Okay, any more questions on that one? That ends the discussion of the consent agenda, and...
I do have a question. On the fifth, is that to top off, don't we typically hold 7,000 gallons?
Yes, the big diesel tank, yes, 6,000 gallons.
How many gallons was this, I'm sorry?
This is for 5,000.
Okay, that's well, thank you.
Yes.
Any more questions?
We have to order, when John calls, he says, "I need 7,000 gallons of diesel." So they give us a price per gallon, and then you might, you know, take that price per gallon and multiply it times 7,000. But when they get here, our tank may not hold exactly what we order, so they only draw what they, what the tank will hold.
So we're only able to handle 5,000?
Yeah. I was hoping I quoted 7,300 to get the cheapest price, man, I could only hit 59, it would be more.
Good try, then.
Yeah, I tried, it worked.
But the turnaround...
So, when they don't say on the account, it's just not been dropped yet, and so it's been lower price?
The price per gallon changes so quickly, we have to call when I walk in.
Daily.
So, yeah.
I was just hoping maybe they'd hold it, you know, give it.
If you have a customer that loves it, I'll say that way.
I guess that way. Okay. Any more questions? All right, that ends the discussion of the consent agenda, and we move on to public input. Do we have any public input?
I do.
I have Michael Scott.
Yes, ma'am.
188 New Home Land.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I need to read this out to you, and the speaker should state his name and address. All remarks shall be made to the board as a whole, and not to a particular board member. Speakers are reminded that members of the board are without authority to act independently as individuals in official matters. Your presentation should be as brief as possible, yet should include all information considered important by the speaker. Unless an extension of time is granted by the board chairperson, each speaker's remarks shall not exceed five minutes in length if the speaker is not on a regular board meeting agenda. The board may not respond to comments or questions posed by citizens in their presentation, but may instead take these comments and questions under advisement for response at a later time. No profound or vulgar language or personal abuse against any individual shall be permitted. Questions may be asked by board members or as intended for purposes of clarification. However, no speaker shall be permitted from the board to enter into any discussion with the board, either indirectly or through a board member.
Yeah, this is a little late, and I'm just sending this on behalf of my granddaughter, Nina Scott, she goes to Dade so, or Dade Middle. December 17th, they had a big grand birthday, or Christmas party over there, okay? The child was sick, we had a doctor's note for two days, she was running fever, we kept her at school. We sent her to school on the third day, which would have been Thursday. Y'all sent out notes and everything on here about parties and stuff, we had no notice of it. Nina comes down Thursday, "Oh, we've got a party tomorrow at school, we need some money for it." She goes to school the next morning, she gets put off to the side with supposedly some other kids, and wasn't allowed to go to the party because she didn't hollowed out her work done. And while the child was sick, we fortunately have internet in their home now, we kept her doing her work. And I didn't go to school, or school overnight complaining, because if we'd have done good, we'd have maybe, or worse already, but, you know, so I mean, every case, if the child's not, and we should have been notified, at the least, the job won't keep her from the party, or the school. I'm just reading, reading about this, and then, you know, big prizes, who'd come up with party, bicycles, karaoke machines, the money hadn't come from somewhere for this party, other prizes. I know y'all stupid on that. And is William Ayers, is any of his books used in teaching at the school system?
I don't know 100% of our curriculum, but we do try to take this.
Then you know what I'm talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I'm not attacking you, Ms. Hartman, but Nina, you know, that one thing, because I called you about the bus situation, and you told me, I think it was Dr. Taylor, the director of the buses, would be giving me a call so I could discuss it with you. And you never got the first one to come. And here's Nina's report card, most of last semester, it was saying she had like a 13 and a 14 on her grades. Then at the end of the semester, she passed, she's passing everything, even though we were holding and stuff from her because it was saying she was failing. And then, you're either absent, or you're not absent, how do you have a 1.92 absent? I'm sorry, I told them, I told them. That's all I got to say.
Okay, Mr. Scott, I would suggest that you set up an appointment time with Mr. Engel, the superintendent, and discuss this.
I can do that.
Your information.
All right, I will, I'll be, I'll be seeing them. Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is... I need a motion to approve the consent agenda items 1 through 6 on the agenda. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second? Call in favor. The next item is executive session for personnel and property. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session for personnel and property?
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Second, call in favor.